Aze.
Present.
Councilmember Brian.
Present.
And Mayor Clarno.
Here. All right, with that, we'll move into item number three, special presentations and announcements. And we'll start with item number, we have two today, and we'll start with Stephen Bryan from the Community Resource Center Collaborative to talk about tobacco-free parks. Push the button, push and hold.
Test. Good evening, good to see everybody, I haven't been in here in quite a while, so it's good to be back. Appreciate your ongoing support, I'm Stephen Bryan with the director with the Dunsmere Community Resource Center and the executive director with the Siskiess Community Resource Collaborative. I'm actually here kind of under a different hat I wear, I'm the chair of the Tobacco Education Council for the county and working on a micro grant with the care program here locally in Dunsmere. You've heard of, part of our initiative is to create smoke-free parks in communities. And I would, I'm here tonight to talk to you about the dangers and effects of secondhand smoke outdoors. And also to hopefully spur the council to put it on agenda as a voting item in the future to create spaces in our community that are smoke-free. I have spoken with Parks and Recs and they are 100% in support of this as well. I'm just trying to get, cut some of that work out for you, so lay the groundwork. I do have some information I'm gonna pass up. And I'm sure most of you already know this information. But vaping and burning cigarettes are very unhealthy, especially in secondhand situations. Actually, secondhand smoke is more dangerous than smoke that's filtered from the smoker that's ingesting it. And there's good facts on here for the truth initiative on that information that backs that up. I also had a meeting and training with the high school students here locally in Dunsmere. Unfortunately, being the end of the school year, they weren't able to come tonight. So I pulled in my connections here at the elementary school. And you can see behind me, students that are here to show another project we work on throughout the county with the schools. It's an art project and they brought their posters, if you'd like to show the council your posters. And we give out prizes through the Tobacco Education Council on, based on grade level. But as you can see, these students are very interested in smoke-free community and they understand the dangers of smoke. So there's no safe level of secondhand smoke exposure even outside. Breathing secondhand smoke even for a short time is toxic. Secondhand smoke can travel over 20 feet once exhaled. Secondhand smoke has a higher concentration of toxic cancer-causing chemicals than smoke inhaled through a cigarette filter. Children and babies that are most at risk for adverse health effects related to secondhand smoke. And then just a couple more facts about secondhand smoking is a A lot of people think that vaping is a healthier choice than smoking regular cigarettes, it is not. It's more and more studies are coming out every day and it does affect secondhand smoke as well. There's just as many chemicals coming out in secondhand smoke from vaping as regular cigarettes. And I think these kids appreciate the fact that our local schools are in danger with the vaping epidemic going on. Creating outdoor spaces that don't have smoking encourage healthy behavior for our children in our communities. And sets a good example of what we want to see, the health of our community at the forefront. That's a lot of what we focus on at the Resource Center. And I know the school does a lot of that as well because we partner together on a lot of those projects. So that's my spiel there and I hope you do consider working with Parks and Recs and creating some smoke-free spaces in our community to protect our children and our future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the second one. But before I do, just I'd like to say thank you to the elementary school students for coming today. Thank you, Stephen, for doing the presentation. Right, and with that, we'll move on to special presentation number two, proclamation recognizing May 18th through 24th, 2025 as National Public Works. Before I read the proclamation, Dustin, is there anything you'd like to add on this?
Yes, so I just, I felt it was appropriate as, you know, a lot of times city staff doesn't get recognized for all the work they do and the efforts they put in. And just happened to, I got a reminder that it's like, oh, it's National Public Works Week coming up. And so I felt like it was worthy of honoring our employees who work in the field and all those residents, some residents that work in other communities as well, so.
All right, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Dunsmere. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector. Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children of the city of Dunsmere to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025, 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now resolved, I, Mayor Michael Clarno, do hereby designate the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representative of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and advancing quality of life for all. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Dunsmere done at the City Council of Dunsmere, California on May 15th, 2025. Yeah, the public works employees of this town do an amazing job at keeping the water flowing, sewer flowing, waste moving. Thank you. And I'd also just like to take a moment to put out there the amount of grants that this town receives for public works projects. I know, Matthew, you were, you kind of kept a running total of the amounts over the years and it's, in the last five or 10 years, it's an excess of 13 to 15 million dollars worth of grants, correct?
We go 10 years, it's way higher than that. The last three years is 18.
18 million, so, you know, so much of the
30.
30, okay, closer to 30, so. With the amount of, the amount of improvements and maintenance and hard work that they have done, it would not be possible without all of those grants. And they have done such a good job at making sure the work is done in a way that best serves the community. So with that, we'll move on to public comment. This is a time for any member of the public to address the city council on anything that relates to city business. If you are here to speak on anything under items number 10 or 11, which is old business or new business, I do ask that you hold your public comment for those particular items as there will be dedicated public comment for each of those individual items. I will give a 30-second warning when your three minutes are almost up. And with that, anyone wishing to make public comment may come up to the podium. And we'll do individuals in the room first, followed by individuals on Zoom. If you would like to make a comment on Zoom, please go to the React tab and raise your hand. With that, I will open up public comment.
I had to type this out, otherwise. I'm here to give my opinion on the Dunsmere Library, which is part of the Siskiess library system. I have been a library user for 50 years and a library worker for over 25 years, primarily in Portland, Oregon, which has an exceptional library system. I began using the library as a 21-year-old mother and have continued using and counting on the library since then. The library has given me thousands of titles of books, media and DVDs. I have used the library's copiers, their microfiche, their magazines and their excellent reference help, helping me when I had trouble accessing paperwork that I needed. When my father died, a reference librarian helped me find the small fund that would ultimately be shared with me and my siblings. Librarians and library workers strive to help anyone, though at times we as library workers were odd, at odds with library management, we never pulled away from patrons needing our help, ever. If we were talking with another library worker and a patron asked a question, our attention was absolute to the patron. Some of the hardest core union library workers, I watched drop anything to help a patron. Where else in the world does that happen? That dedication to service. Dunsmere is a tiny library, but it is mighty with the help of Wes and Karen and others who work so hard to make Dunsmere Library a destination, a service and a resource for the community. Folks new to town who are needing directions, maps, help with job searches, campgrounds, internet access, phone numbers, restaurants that are open, a book to read or a story to tell. Find the library workers at Dunsmere Library to lean on and get the information they need. Libraries are for everyone and anyone. Libraries are for everyone and anyone will be welcomed into that space. There are few free spaces in this world and even in Dunsmere, California. We must support our Dunsmere Library because Dunsmere Library supports the citizens and travelers and future citizens in this community. There are children's storytimes, monthly displays, meeting room use, book clubs, tutoring help and historical talks and raffles and live music. On the website, under the "I want to," one can apply for a birth certificate, contact county departments, find job openings and lost pets, pay property tax or report a hazardous spill. Sign up for code red alerts or volunteer for search and rescue. I can list so many resources available and with the kind and helpful staff at any Siskiess library leading the way. The collection of Siskiess County libraries is extensive and Dunsmere Library needs to share in that. I check out many movies that my husband and I are not able to find streaming or else we do find them.
I do apologize, but unfortunately, the three minutes are up.
I'm sorry?
I said I do apologize, but unfortunately, your three minutes are up.
Oh, it is, man, that went fast, okay.
Thank you very much for your comment. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comments this evening?
Hi, Steve Bryan, Dunsmere Community Resource Center. I'd like to welcome the entire community to come to our Family Fun Night. We do this every year at the Baybrook Ballpark over by the community center. It's on May 30th, Friday, from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. This is in partnership with the Rotary Club of Dunsmere and the Dunsmere Clinic. And there'll be a free barbecue, including hamburgers, hot dogs and chips. There will be free activities for children and families. We have several of our local community partner organizations that'll be there providing activities. There'll also be balloon tying and a magic show too. So Friday, the 30th of May, from 4:30 to 6:30, we encourage you to come out, socialize, enjoying the fun. And then on June 11th, which is a Wednesday, we're doing our annual blessing of the Dunsmere Community Garden right here across the street from you. We encourage everybody to come, it's 10 AM on June 11th. It's a multi-denominational blessing of the garden and it includes your local revived church and a Native American drum circle, just to name a couple. And it'll be refreshments at the end, it's always a great way for us to kick off the growing season. Our Dunsmere County Garden is registered organic with the state of California and we've been growing non-GMO organically. Since we took it over, it's, time flies, it's been seven years now. So please come and join in on that day, that's a really beautiful day, we enjoy it, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment this evening?
Hello, I'm Quentin Gaddy, I'm the Director of Business Development for Siskiess Economic Development. I have a few different reports to share out. Last week, I had the opportunity to speak with the State Director of the USDA and to convey some of the concerns that rural jurisdictions like Dunsmere have with some of the cuts to rural development, community facilities, lie heap and other programs. I shared how these programs are really instrumental and vital to supporting the city's infrastructure and ability to provide services and shared, you know, we had concerns with the upcoming fiscal year 26 budget. And just wanted to share out what communities like Dunsmere that I live in are going through with that. So he heard us, he'll follow up with us and we're looking forward to that engagement. The second thing I'd like to talk about is to go back to the survey that Cosmont had done back in November. Two of their top three most responded things were on supporting small business and then leveraging natural resources. You're good, you're good. And so I wanted to share something that dovetails with both of them. So an organization we work with closely and I know Mayor Michael Clarno is involved with, Superior California Economic Development, has a new microloan program for outdoor recreation-based businesses. These are programs that can be real easy, real easily applied for, we can help them at the SBDC. And they're available for Siskiess County businesses that engage in outdoor rec or tourism or something in that realm. And so those range from $0 to $100,000 and can work with any business's interests that. The second thing was, you know, there's, there was a request and demand for further small business assistance and supporting entrepreneurship and whatnot. And so we are at the Dunsmere Chamber of Commerce on the first and third Fridays, that includes tomorrow with open office hours for small businesses. We don't get a whole lot of drop-ins or walk-ins in that period of time, but we're really trying to encourage that community knows about it, that it is a resource they can access. So Dunsmere-based businesses don't have to go down to Redding or up to Irika to be able to meet with a business advisor. And so that's all I have to report out, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment this evening? And seeing no one, I will close public comment. And with that, we'll move on to council and staff comments and we will start with our representative from the Sheriff's Department.
Sergeant Ortiz couldn't make it tonight, so he sent me, so you guys get the blessing of seeing two meetings in a row. The city of Dunsmere has contracted 5,280 hours of patrol time for the 2024 to 25 fiscal year. As of this date, 4,186 hours have been completed. 75% of the fiscal year is complete and 79% of the contracted hours have been complete. And sometimes this number changes, it'll increase with more logs that get turned in, so that's all I have.
Thank you. City Manager Reese.
All right, Mayor Council, so the demolition for the public works site will begin Monday. And we asked that the public stay away, stay out. There is lead contamination paint there and so there will be extra precautions in place. Even our own city workers will not be inside the site during work operation hours of, of the demolition company. Over the past week, Public Works has been kind of catching up on vegetation management, starting to dry out, so we're shifting into sprinkler mode. Derailment cleanup, I hope I didn't steal that from Stephen, derailment cleanup next Wednesday and Thursday. So they have gone down and they've separated everything and they will be loading that then. And so there will be expected road closure on those times. And Union Pacific has reached out to all of the residents up on Simpson Avenue. Mossberry Falls has been a topic of national news. We did make LA Times and the New York Post and People Magazine online. So it has been, and that was, I did not, they actually, a reporter approached me. And so that has brought extra garnered interest in the Mossberry Falls subject. And I had a podcast interview for Active NorCal Tuesday. And tomorrow morning, we have an interview with a TV station, so.
Which, you know which TV station?
KDRV, I think, it's the NBC.
Okay. And other than that, everything else was focused on Finance Committee and the Planning Commission, so.
Stephen, I see you have some reports this evening?
Yeah, so I wanted to give a follow-up for the siren test that we conducted on the Friday after the last meeting. So as you know, some of the sirens did not work, which is why we test them. So the, we had an issue with the cemetery siren, there's an electrical issue there, so it only sounded three times. So that is going to be addressed, we're looking into ways that we can fix that hopefully. And then the siren here at the fire hall, the air tank was not sufficient for the siren to sound loudly for two full minutes, it only did 30 seconds and then it got much quieter for the rest of the test. So we are looking at that fix, that will be more expensive. So we might come back to you with information on that. But the two sirens on the north side of town, the one at the community center and the one on the north tank, which is kind of behind Penny's Diner, those both worked. So if you live on the north side of town and you still didn't see the, hear the siren, it's because it doesn't reach you, which is why it's so important to sign up to Siskiess Ready. Siskiess Ready is the official alerting platform, so please sign up for that. That's how you'll get your alerts, the sirens are just an extra thing and if there's a power outage, they will not work. I also wanted to give an update on Green Waste Day, which also happened after the last council meeting. So Green Waste Day saw a significant increase, we saw 80 households participate, which is up from the 46 that participated last fall. So it was a huge increase, we had 136 individual trips made and we got rid of 492 cubic yards of green waste, which ended up being, I believe, nine roll-off dumpsters once it was compacted. Really would like to thank all the volunteers involved, we had volunteers come with AmeriCorps afar away as Chico State. We really need those young people for that event because it's a lot of heavy lifting. And if you're there, you know it's very busy with cars going in and out. So thanks, everybody, for participating in that, the next one is scheduled for October 25th, so start getting to work in your yards now, so you can get rid of that for free.
And I'd just like to compliment you and Adam Heilman and everyone else who worked so hard to get the word out about the test. I think there was a lot less panic than people expected and a lot more engagement with it as well. I saw a lot of people talking back and forth about what they heard where. And it really seemed like pretty much everyone knew about the test going into it. So I'd really like to compliment you on getting the word out. And with that, I also see our new city attorney, David Lim is here, I'd just like to thank you for being here tonight and give you a second to say anything if you would like.
Yeah, good evening, everybody, a pleasure to be here. I actually staffed my first Dunsmere meeting of any kind last night at the Planning Commission and went well. But I'm happy and eager to be here with the city council, so, you know, the best meetings for a city attorney is one where I never speak, so I will stop talking now, but it's a pleasure to be working with them.
Thank you for being here. And with that, we will move on to committee reports.
Finance? Yeah, Finance Committee met twice. We're in the thick of budget season, but most importantly, we received the audit and had the opportunity to speak with our auditor for several hours. Last year's audit, mostly sadly, our financial position is fairly strong in the general fund. Lot of strength there. All four of our enterprise funds for the audited year 2023-24 came back in the negative.
No. Yeah. Water did.
Water was marginally. Well, the three main concerns are sewer, solid waste and airport. Airport is still in the negative, but it's decreasing the debt that it's owed, things in the right direction there. The main one is solid waste, which council's aware of, we did approve the increase for the current fiscal year, for the one year, based on that study. But there's a lot of change, we'll be coming back to that. If things don't change, that fund is the one of the most concerned, but overall, things are looking very positive. I would like to thank our finance director, for the first time ever, his accounting practices didn't garner any findings. He's been working up to that, our auditor is very strict and was happy to recommend him doing the best job he's done yet. So I'd like to thank him and recommend his excellent performance in that audit to council. Otherwise, we are reviewing the two-year budget that's in formation. We're very much getting into the weeds on a lot of those issues. It's coming in where one would expect with the caveat that it's time to solve the public works building issue. And that pushes us into a projected deficit. So I guess I would just like to say, I imagine a full budget will be at council probably in the second meeting in June at this stage.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to present a formal, have an initial formal presentation on June 5th and then on June 26th, we would have the final budget.
And if anyone would like to attend, we've completed our review of the general fund and Finance Committee. We're documenting enterprise funds next Monday from 2 to 4:30 PM. And I will be there.
All right, were there any other committees that met in the intervening time?
No.
I did some work, but it wasn't a formal meeting.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
No council comments?
So multiple meetings, we're moving through, no, just kidding. All right, with that, I'm going to council comments.
I just would like to thank the success of Dogwood Days coming back last weekend on Kate Clother and the Chamber primarily, but additionally on Siskiess Arts Museum, Cornerstone, Be Kind, Al's Depot and Coburn Lee and all the businesses and folks that came out to make that event a success. It was wonderful to see a first-time event be so well-attended as it was and I look forward to it being a staple every year.
Councilmember Everett?
No comments.
Councilmember Lucazi.
I just apologize, my dog is usually much better behaved, so.
Vice Mayor Sebring?
No comments.
All right, I'll keep mine fairly short this evening. I was honored to emcee the awards dinner, the Dunsmere Awards Gala and give out awards to some of the citizens and businesses who work so hard to make this city as successful as it is. And then also today, I was able to attend my first Superior California Economic Development Meeting. Through my role on the city council, I am on their board now, so that is exciting. And with that, we will move on to approval of the minutes. We do have a few extra minutes to approve, as I believe this is the ones that were kicked back for corrections, all coming back, so.
I'll motion to approve the minutes from April 3rd, 2025 of the regular city council meeting, April 17th, 2025 of the regular city council meeting and the May 1st, 2025's regular city council meeting as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Oh, second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved, and we'll move on to the consent agenda, of which we have two items. Uh, the check register for four twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, uh, through five nine, two thousand twenty-five, and the consideration of, uh, street closure, uh, by Dunsmere High School. Just one clarification, that is at the high school's request, correct?
It is, yeah, the high school's request is in there.
Okay, cool.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda adopted, uh, we have no public hearing this evening, so we'll move on to item number ten, old business. Uh, there are two items, we'll start with item A, first reading of ordinance five seven nine, adopting new fire hazard severity zones. And we did go over most of this last time, it just mainly got kicked back, uh, or moved back a week, uh, just so a clarification could be, um, looked into based on a citizen's question. And I believe Stephen will go straight to you for this one.
Yeah, and I am gonna share my screen just because, um, I did hear a few rumors going around town, so I just wanted to address those to ease concerns for everybody, um, so just bear with me a second while I share my screen. It'll be a quick one, I promise. All right, um, so there were a few, these are all things that I heard directly from somebody asking me questions about this, so I'm kind of, I, I answered their questions already, but I wanted to kind of throw this out there, just because apparently it had been going around. Um, the, this map, um, has been created by the state fire marshal, um, this is a state map, every community in the state was given their own map for their own community. Um, and why are we adopting this map? We are required to adopt the map, um, per California Government Code five one one seven nine. Does this change anything for you? Uh, no, it does not change anything for you, and I will explain, uh, if you live in other communities, it might change something for you, but here in Dunsmere, it won't. Um, so here, I, I zoomed in, because these maps are very big, um, so I'm gonna show you all sections of town. So this is the old map, so the old map, you can see, um, this is the very far northern end of town. You can see everything is red except for that little gray circle at the very top, and that's the airport. And then the rest of town, um, you can see, it's all red too. Um, so all, all red, um, and then the legend's right there, and you can see the red, it stands for V H F H S Z, which is Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zone. Uh, so you can see the entirety of Dunsmere on the old map was the Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zone, only the airport was not included in that. This is the new map, uh, so the north side of town, uh, you can see is that awful red color now, including the airport. And the south side of town is still that awful red color, um, which still is the Very High Fire Severity Zone. Um, so the zones have not changed here in Dunsmere, so everybody is still in the Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zone. Um, only the airport changed, um, adopting this map does not change your fire hazard severity zone. Um, and then there have been concerns about, will the insurance company, you know, increase my rate because I'm in the Very High Fire Hazard Severity Zone? Uh, they own, they do their own secret models, um, top secret, uh, they have a lot of numbers, I assume, that go into those that aren't our red-colored map, um, so I don't think they even look at this. You know, it's, you can't say for sure, but, uh, we were still a Very High Fire Hazard, Higher Severity Zone, um, so nothing changed. Um, so that's just kind of addressing all those questions that I, I kind of heard, and I believe that's everything I have.
Any questions? Nope, all right, I will open this up for public comment, if you'd like to make public comment on this item, I will have three minutes, I'll give a thirty-second warning when your time is almost up, uh, and please limit comment to this particular item. And with that, I will open it up to public comment. If you are on Zoom and would like to make comment, please go to the React tab and raise your hand. And seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item. And I'd just like to start off, I, um, I talked with, uh, I had the opportunity to talk with David Hicks, uh, earlier this week, or was that last week, whatever, um, and he wanted to, uh, and I had already gotten the answer from Stephen, uh, that his concern was not relevant to, um, to, yeah, to the map, um, and he did express his thanks that we were willing to push this back, uh, to this meeting to get that question answered. So the other thing I learned that I thought was interesting today is that, um, Supervisor Harris was also at the Superior County Economic Development Meeting, and he said that the county does not plan on adopting the map. And with that, I move that we adopt the, uh, fire hazard map for the city of.
There's a suggested motion on page twenty-nine, which you should probably.
I will probably read that in its entirety.
Yeah, because there is some findings for CEQA.
Oh.
It is exempt.
Since I was the one who pushed this back, I feel like it's only fair that I'm the one who.
I actually think that was my fault, because I thought this could have been a resolution, but it was not, so, Stephen looked into it, it was very nice of him to do that, so.
Regardless, uh, we answered two questions, so that's perfect. Suggested motion, I move that we make the findings that the project will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that it is exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section one five zero six one, parentheses B, second set of parentheses three, comma, one five three zero three, and one five three zero eight. Further, I, uh, I further move that we introduce and read ordinance five seven nine by title only, and that we direct staff to bring ordinance five seven nine back for adoption at the next regular meeting.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously, well, no, for the second reading, yeah, uh, to go into the second. And with that, we'll move on to, um, and be approved staffing change slash hire full-time temporary Public Works worker. Now, I just wanted to, I was, so.
That's on page thirty-six, so.
Yeah, and I thought we did approve this last time with the condition.
No, there was a, there was a concern over.
Unemployment, yeah.
Yeah.
So, okay, that, that's why I'm bringing it back to the council, so you guys, you, the council approved, uh, this at the last meeting with the caveat that there was no unemployment required to be paid out. And so after research and communication with the city attorney's office, um, there is a requirement for unemployment, potentially to be paid out if they do claim it, um, regardless of whether or not they have an end date. And so, um, I wanted to bring it back to the council for clarification and, uh, more discussion if you guys so choose. Uh, and staff is still recommending approval of the position.
I recall slightly differently, but that's fine, Ben, that's why there's five people sitting up here, six including staff. So, um, with that, any questions? Seeing none, I will open this up to public comment. Same rules as before, three minutes, thirty-second warning, please limit any public comment to this item. Uh, and we are open to public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment.
Just for clarification from the city attorney, um, David, so we did make a motion to approve this, almost verbatim, to the motion that's on page thirty-six, so if no one from the majority of that vote is considering a change in their vote, we could just move on from this item and we don't require another vote, correct?
I'm sorry, at the last meeting, did you move second and vote on it, and then you just asked for clarification?
So, yeah, yeah, so last meeting, we moved and voted on it to award it, um, we did ask for a return item to discuss the, the unemployment piece, but if no one is reconsidering their vote for the original motion, can we just move forward?
Yeah, one, uh, point of clarification for anybody, so is the, the language is exactly the same in the staff report?
The suggested motion is, the, the staffer's report adds in the comments associated with the unemployment, but the motion suggested to the council is the same as the motion that was presented at the last council meeting.
Yeah, I think you're fine though, I don't think you need to redo them though.
Okay.
Okay.
So according to Rosenberg's Rule of Order, unless one of us wants to reconsider our vote, because it was a five oh vote in favor of moving forward, we can essentially just move on from this item and we don't have to vote again.
Would anyone like to reconsider? Does anyone already think you can move over? Nope, all right, but that will move on to, uh, new business.
I don't get to do parliamentary procedure very often, so that's, that's invigorating.
So we have, um, four items for new business today, uh, first is consider approval of Resolution twenty, or two thousand twenty-five dash ten, uh, resolution adopting the Siskiyou County Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update as the official hazard mitigation plan of the city of Dunsmere.
All right, uh, Mayor and Council, I will, uh, pass this on to Stephen as he's done majority of the work, uh, coordinated with the count, uh, the county, O E S office and their consultants, so.
All right, um, so the hazard mitigation plan, um, for the county, uh, all the jurisdictions within the county adopt, fall under that plan and adopt their own projects under that plan. Uh, this update has been taking place since summer of last year. Um, the update was done by a contractor, um, that the county got paid for through a grant. Um, the city has been participating in those meetings, uh, there were public meetings online, um, which people were invited to, and there was one in-person meeting here in Dunsmere regarding the plan as well. I did provide substantial comments, um, and revisions for each draft version of the plan, um, and other city staff had a chance to look at the plan as well. The, the plan has been approved by FEMA already, and so what's before you is the final approved version of the plan. Um, it's in that big red binder there, if you want to read all five hundred pages. Um, I actually, I, I really did, except for the parts that were for other jurisdiction, I, I didn't read those, but everything that pertained to us, I did read, um, so, uh, I can tell you that it is very boring. But it is, does meet all the requirements that we needed to meet, um, it does have some projects in there that we, we wanted to add in there that were different from the last time we did the update. And so this, this plan, uh, pending your approval, once it is approved, um, we will send that resolution to FEMA, and then we will officially have the hazard mitigation plan adopted, and it's good for five years at that point. Um, and that does open us up to the full range of FEMA funding.
Any questions?
Will FEMA exist in the future? Sorry.
I can't answer that question. As, as the law is written right now, uh, they do provide seventy-five percent of disaster assistance. And recently, they were being more generous and providing more, um, I don't think that will be the case going forward, but, uh, seventy-five percent is the baseline.
I do have a legitimate question, um, were you able to update the project list to include all of the projects that you wanted? Because my experience with this process is that the county did not respond to comments from jurisdictions asking for edits to their areas, and so, um, were you able to get those into this version that we would be adopting? And are, have you gotten any confirmation from FEMA or Cal O E S that that's appropriate?
Uh, yes, so we, we did make changes to that, I did have to kind of send them the same updates a few times, um, to get them in there, but they were eventually all in there, um, and then I do just want to also add that, um, we're doing the Resilient Dunsmere Plan update right now, which we're going to kind of see if we can do a hazard mitigation plan update as well in there. So there is opportunity, um, if there's not something that you want in there to add to that Resilient Dunsmere Plan, and then do our own hazard mitigation plan adoption, which will probably happen next year. But this is, it's important that the county sign, or that the city sign on to this so that we have coverage now. Um, and it's also good to participate in this process regardless of if we do our own plan in the future, um, just because it, it's good to, I think, to good to get all the partners together. Whether or not you all play together nicely is another thing, but I think it's good to have everyone together, so you can at least attempt to.
Thank you.
I have a quick question here, given that this is a five-hundred-page bureaucratic document done by a contractor, I assume the answer to this is going to be mostly no, but is there anything, um, given, let's say if there was a fire, and fire moves uphill, um, starting down on the little strip of the county just south of town, uh, is there anything interesting in terms of that addresses specifically Craigview Drive in South Dunsmere, or the Siskiyou County portion of Craigview Drive?
So, uh, the short answer is no, the hazard mitigation plan is, is largely focused on identifying hazards, uh, in a broader sense. C W P Ps, Community Wildfire Protection Plans, do a lot better job of that sort of thing, getting on the granular level like that. In the Resilient Dunsmere Plan, we have the opportunity to do that sort of thing, get more granular, because it is more focused on us, uh, this, um, I mean, I did actively participate in this planning effort, I would have loved to see a, a more, um, engaged planning effort, that it allowed more involvement, um, but I think, in, in a sense, we are lucky that the county was able to get a grant and that we didn't have to do that heavy lift ourselves, so that is, is a, is also a good thing.
All right, any other questions? All right, with that, I'll open this item up for public comment, um, same rules as before, three minutes, and I will give a thirty-second warning when your time is almost up, um, please limit any comment to this item, and with that, I will open public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. All right, any discussion?
I do have a question of a curiosity, are you gonna be submitting a notice of interest with the new hazard mitigation grant?
So, we haven't quite discussed that yet, um, uh, off, off the top of my head, uh, the hazard mitigation grant program is a seventy, is a twenty-five percent match, um, you know, and we have talked about the sirens, getting that, uh, full system upgraded to like the voice sirens, which tell you actually what to do, um, and also we could increase the range at that point, because we know coverage doesn't exist all over town anyway. Looking at the four sirens in town and the two down in Castella, that's probably about a million-dollar project. Um, there is opportunity for cost share there, if we can get Shasta County or Siskiyou County to jump in on that. But it's hard, um, to do that, and, you know, twenty-five percent's a lot of money when you're talking about a million dollars, um, for a town our size. Uh, so that's one project, there, there might be other opportunities, um, but the, the cost of projects adds up quickly. Um, the BRIC program, which unfortunately was canceled, was a much better option for us, um, because that was only a ten percent cost share, um, for low-income communities like ours, so, uh, you know, if you want, if you have an idea, I'm happy to entertain that.
No, I was just curious.
Yeah, there's nothing right now, and we haven't, we haven't talked about it yet, but that is on my list.
And then they did confirm that they can use your time as in kind for that twenty-five percent, by the way.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can sometimes, depending on the equation, double count it, because technically it's a state appropriation through a grant, plus your time is considered a disseparate in kind.
Oh.
So you can.
Oh, look at that.
You can, there's, there's a technical double dip loophole in, in it.
So Stephen works on the grant forty hours a week.
Well, that's, that's good to know, yeah, that makes it, that makes it more feasible.
Yeah, so don't count that out, we found that out, and there's technically a way that you can claim that you have a, because we pay for Stephen through a state grant, um, that because you're using a state grant, you can use it as match for the function if you're the person managing the program, plus you can also count your hours in kind.
Okay, awesome.
So, just, we just figured that out, so, excited, um, anyway, nope, sorry, go ahead.
I move that we make the finding of the proposed project would not have significant adverse effect on the environment, and that we adopt the recommended CEQA exemption, and that we adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-five dash ten, adopting the Siskiyou County California Local Hazard Mitigation Plan update as the official hazard mitigation plan of the city of Dunsmere by Todd alone.
Second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved, and, uh, thanks for all the hard work on that, and also I'm sorry that you had to deal with the delays from the county throughout the entire process, um.
It moved pretty fast for the county.
Well, it moved pretty fast, they just started way too late, because they move fast, and it would be nicer if they had started on time. All right, with that, we'll move on to consider approval of the sub-recipient agreement with Great Northern Services for Community Development Block Grant for Housing Rehabilitation Services.
All right, um, Mayor and Council, this is the first of two, um, sub-recipient agreements, and so we kind of went through this process, so, what was that, December or something like that, um, we didn't get the grants, so we're, we're going back to reapply. Um, so this is, uh, the same project that we had brought forward, um, early or late last year, or early this year, for the housing rehabilitation services. For the housing rehabilitation services. And essentially this is just the scope of work that we will have with Great Northern Services. To conduct all the outreach and, and administration of the project if awarded.
Alright, any questions?
Yeah, I had a couple. First, I always wanted to know if, David, did you have a chance to review the sub-recipient agreement?
Not in detail, but I'm very familiar, I'm familiar with CDVG grant funding. So want to ask me a question?
No, I just wanted to make sure, since we have you on board now, that our agreements are being vetted and meet the standard you approve of. If you approve of it, then that, that's fine.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at this one in detail, but I certainly can do that moving forward and all according to Dustin.
I will say, I think if we could hear from Brandy, I think there are maybe some time constraints with this as well. So if this did come back, it would have to come back pretty quickly for the council to consider. Because I believe that there's some CDVG requirements for public hearings, correct?
Yeah, no, I'm supportive of it in that regard. I don't think we need to table it. It's the same agreement in substance we saw before.
Yeah.
I guess the question turns into, we didn't get the grant, which is. Sorry to hear that.
I think you have to hold the button.
Correct, we did not get the grant.
Were there any comments or particular reasons why, or is it federal?
This one was a first come, first served grant and it wasn't, there were, and there were funding limitations to it. And so it was submitted after the funding was expended. So, and it was really tight. It was, it was really tight. All grants this year will be competitive, so they'll be on a scale. Scored on a scale.
Well, that's good.
All of them.
Do we have a technical assistance looking at the application this time around from additional agencies to see how we scale?
Um, no, when we, we should score pretty high. I don't think that'll be a problem. If threshold requirements are met. There might be some issues. I can. I'll. Confer with HCD, the rep, and ask what the scoring would have, they probably didn't even score the last one, so.
Yeah, that's what I figured. That's why I was wondering if they had a technical assistance group for this. Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I guess I just, and this maybe is not directed at you specifically, but I hadn't heard what's going on with the CDVG program period right now. I imagine there's some instability there as well.
Existing grants, including the twenty twenty-four grants, which were, none were awarded to Dunsmere. Are so far still funded, twenty twenty-five so far is still funded. Twenty twenty-six, of course, all CDVG by heap. And any food programs will be eliminated if Congress adopts the president's budget.
Sweet.
Thank you.
And with that, I will open up this item for public comment. Anyone wishing to make public comment on this item? This is the time to do so. Three minutes, thirty-second warning. Please limit any comment to this particular item, and I will open this up to public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. And any discussion?
I think regardless if it gets funded or not, I think we should move forward with the program. So I'm happy to make a motion to approve the community development block grant sub-recipient agreement with Great Northern Services. For housing rehabilitation program implementation for amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand US dollars.
I'll second.
Alright, it has been moved. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Okay. Alright, just kidding. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucchese?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sebring?
Aye.
And Mayor Clarno?
Aye.
Unanimously approved.
CDVG two.
CDVG two. Item number letter C, consider approval of the sub-recipient agreement with Great Northern Services. For community development block grant for storm drain master planning.
Alright, mayor and council, this is the second of the agreements, very much similar in scope. Except there will be a component of contracting for, to conduct the master plan. And most of the other work associated with that, the administration of it is not quite as complicated. But that would be conducted by Great Northern Services. And so when we do go to bid, we will have another agreement associated with actual development of the master plan. But open training questions. So this is to, I guess, kind of a scope of the project. Would be for us to conduct a stormwater master plan, which has never been done in the city of Dunsmere. And so as we know, the water never stops falling and it always runs downhill, right? And so. We, we feel it's prudent for us to have a master plan and a set, you know, kind of layout projects and direction. And get community input. And this is a good opportunity to take advantage of while the CDVG program still exists.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Alright, with that, I'll open it up to public comment. Three minutes, thirty-second warning. Please limit any comment to this item. And I will open public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item.
We're going to think positive thoughts. It's only a draft budget. Motion to approve community development block grant sub-recipient agreement with Great Northern Services. For storm drain master plan services for an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Alright, it has been moved and seconded. And given that it looks like it's, might be about to rain, we're going to go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sebring?
Aye.
Councilmember Lucchese?
Aye.
And Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
And Mayor Clarno?
Aye.
Alright, voting passed unanimously. With that, we will move on to letter D. Accept the file or accept and file the audited financial statements for the year ending six thirty-two thousand twenty-four.
Alright, mayor and council, so as mentioned before, with the finance committee report. I'm proud to present the best audit we've had in, I don't know how long, with no findings. And, and kind of highlight. Where we're at total fund wise, we're sitting probably the best the city ever sat in the general fund. And there is some challenges going on in, in the utilities. But overall, the city's in a really good financial position. And. You know, I think this is probably the, one of the best audits I could ask for and I've seen in my career.
Now, one question here. I know, are we planning on? Doing a budget amendment for the coming year for the increased revenues over budget?
Correct, so we will do, we will do a budget amendment. Close, like probably in coordination with the budget. The budget adoption. And so we would take care of that. That would happen at the end of. The second meeting in June, which is the twenty-sixth.
Just because I know that's something Charlie has brought up in the past.
Yeah, and we do have quite a bit of time in that regard. So this is, to be clear, the year that ended.
Oh, I'm aware. I just wanted to make sure that we're doing that for this current year. Since that is something that has been brought up several years by the auditor. So that was only mildly in connection with the, with the item. Alright, with that, any other questions? With that, I'll open up this item for public comment. Same rules as before, three minutes, thirty-second warning. We'll do individuals in the room first, followed by Zoom. Please limit any comment to this item, and I will now open this up to public comment. Seeing. I know. Seeing no one, I will close public comment on this item.
Yes, I'd just like to remind everyone, if they're interested in their city's financial health. There is a requirement of cities each year that they get audited by an independent source. And you can find all of our prior audits on our website and look at where we actually stand financially. It's always best to go look at the source. So it's a very transparent process and a lot of work and expense goes into making sure it's transparent for the citizens.
And we literally didn't balance the books when we first got on council. We, we literally did not do that. So this is, this is, this is a huge deal. It's a very nerdy, like dry huge deal, but like, we now know where all the money is.
And I also.
Statement is a real statement.
And, and I would also like to comment that. If in doubt and you don't understand the financials, please call city hall, set up a meeting with myself or Blake. And we can, we can go through them and help you, help the community understand if there are questions. Because misinformation is, just causes harm and is not productive.
Also, another great resource for finding out more about city finances is the finance committee. Those meetings are open to the public. As mentioned before, we are currently discussing the city budget. And we will have a meeting on this Monday and most likely the following Monday as well.
It won't be the following Monday. I'm on holiday.
Oh, that's right. Memorial Day. So the two Mondays from now, there will most likely be another finance committee meeting.
Right, I'll make a motion to accept and file the city of Dunsmere audit for fiscal year ending six thirty twenty, is it, should it be six thirty twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thanks. Let me restart that. I will make a motion to accept and file the city of Dunsmere audit for fiscal year ending six thirty twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Alright, it has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously approved. And with that, we'll move on to the final item for tonight, future agenda items. Anyone have anything?
The only, I did speak with the planning commission last night and did let them know. I'm going to try and coordinate when David comes up. And so we may be doing a joint planning commission when that is. But David and I have to work out some scheduling stuff. And then we will try and do maybe a special meeting for that. And that'll include some, probably include some training as well, including Brown Act.
Could I just request that finance committee attend as well? It'll only be two additional members, but it's our understanding Brown Act committee. And I think it'd be great for Alan to get that same exposure, to understand the environment there.
And I'm happy to support an item coming back to council regarding the smoke-free parks.
Yeah, I second that.
Essentially just requesting a concept item, a potential budget for code amendments or other recommendations. But no further work than just stacking it out.
Okay.
Particularly the one called children's park.
That would be good. I, I was strongly encouraged at council to consider tobacco-free parks.
Yeah.
Because I have done, done work with that before in previous cities. And, and I feel it's important, just as important. So not just smoke-free, but also tobacco-free.
Yeah.
I do have an item that I think we need to address at council in the coming months. Been part of our budget process for this upcoming year, it's a two-year budget. The first year going out looks pretty stable. We're losing a half percent sales tax that was passed in two thousand and sixteen at sunset. Seventy-five percent of the way through the next year, so next March. We have certainly discussed the idea of passing a permanent version of that sales and use tax. I'd like an item and we could take the finance committee first, but I'd like us to consider putting a item on the. Ballot in November in a special election to deal with that shortfall. We don't have that. The two-year budget goes from quite stable looking to under a lot of stress in year two. So it's just, it's something to really look at. And I'd love for it to go to the community. So it's up to them what services they'd like to receive, what direction they'd like to take the town. I'm in favor of let's, let's hold ourselves to a higher standard and improve our community. But I think we have time to not experience that, that shortfall. And it'd be great to put the question out there before we do experience it, cause a lot of harm, especially if the answer from the community is yes. So however council would like to do that, but it's something that's coming out and maybe time sensitive in the next two months.
And I believe it expires in March of next year. So it doesn't even get us all the way through. The, the next, it doesn't get to the next election, but even more than that, it doesn't even get us all the way through the next financial year. For anyone who is not aware, the city operates on a fiscal year starting July first, so.
Sorry to be the party pillar.
Taxes. Alright. Yeah.
Sorry.
I thought you got.
Alright, and if there's nothing else.